The Commissioners' Court, Room County Administration Building 207, Texas Avenue, Week 106. First item on the agenda is in question, place allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and Commissioner Alton's favor.
Oh my God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you bring to us every day. We thank that we are here in Brazos County and that you have abundantly blessed us and our county. We ask that you give us wisdom as we deliberate, make decisions to benefit Brazos County and the citizens of our community. We ask that you always continue to protect those who protect our lives and our liberties here and abroad. And we ask in your almighty name.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under that flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible. Second item on the agenda is called citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will go to number three, presentation and discussions. A, first one is annual report of the Brazos County Pace Program.
My name is Charlene Hidinger. I'm the President of the Texas Pace Authority, and I'm so pleased to be with you today. Thank you. Wanted to thank you, the county and commissioners, for your leadership in establishing this program here. You were among the first counties to do so, and we've had a very, 2017 was a very good year, and this is the first time we've done an annual report, so it took us a little bit of time to get it together, but I'm very pleased to share it with you today. So as your administrator, I wanted to remind you what this program is because it's a little outside the box. But this is a, the result of a statute that passed in 2013 that authorized counties and municipalities to establish this economic development program if you so choose. So it's called a local economic development tool. It's a local adoption. And so Brazos County is one of 13 counties that have established the program so far. It provides for 100% long-term, low-cost financing that a property owner obtains from a private lender. No taxpayer dollars are used to establish this program. We do not want to link my phone with this, or somebody else's phone. Anyway, it's for energy efficiency, water conservation, and creating power on-site. It enables businesses to become resilient if they so choose. It can be used by commercial, industrial, and multifamily properties with at least five units. In 2017, we were able to participate in over 30 statewide conferences and programs where we were able to educate about pace. We had 49 local presentations that we made, 98 local engagement meetings with various companies and organizations. We did four webinars, 10 service provider training workshops, and we engaged in our first feedback and improvement process. The five chairs of the working groups that established the program, we call Pace in a Box, held open meetings, received feedback about what we were doing well, what we needed to improve on, what people wanted us to know, what they wished they knew, and we were able to take our technical standards and our program guide and provide more specifics. We were encouraged to do more education and outreach with local lenders and businesses, and it gave us some great direction. We are now going through that process with our legal documents as well, inviting the entire community to help us update them and make them stronger. As we've closed projects, particularly a couple of big projects, we found ways that these documents can be a little more sophisticated. So once we have that model, we'll be coming back to you and all the other local governments to ask for your blessing for these updates. And one of the feedback we received from the lenders was that every county's documents are a little bit different around the edges, and if we could make them truly uniform, that would be very helpful. So these are, so you'll, I'll be back with that hopefully in, probably be a couple of months before we get that process completed. And then finally, there's an organization in Houston called the Houston Advanced Research Center. It was funded by George Mitchell, who is involved in developing the fracking technology, and he endowed this organization to help businesses become more environmentally friendly. They got a grant and developed for us a statewide tracking program so that we will be able to tell you by county, by region, by state, the environmental and economic impact of pace projects as they close. And property owners give us their updated utility data, usage data annually, so that tracker will be, we think, a great resource for the state and for local governments. Okay. There we go. So our first county was adopted, adopted the program in March of 2015. We closed our first projects, almost $5 million in 2016, and last year we had a great year. And it looks like 2018 is on track to, to continue some significant growth. This enables us to provide education outreach training, to expand our staff, and to grow because we don't receive our funding until these projects close. So this is important to us, and I want to remind you that we made a commitment to you and all other local governments, as a nonprofit doing this for you as a public service, that when we become self-sufficient, we will come back to you and ask to lower, lower our rates. The organization continues to be funded by the Meadows Foundation, the Rockefeller Brothers Fund, and the Environmental Defense Fund, which is how we are able to do this with low, low user fees compared to everyone else in the country. But this is Texas, and we expect to lower them at some point further. The benefits of being at this, this seems slow, but at the end of last year, we closed our first industrial project, our first hotel, our first office building, our first mixed use. And so now, when we go back to your business owners, we have examples to show about the program, and we're able to talk about it as more than just a great idea. And so our second wave of education and outreach, we expect to be more fruitful, and we're very excited about it. So what's happened here, which has happened pretty much everywhere else, is there's a lot of excitement when the program first passes, and then things kind of die down, and now we're getting ready to do our next wave, and we have case studies to share with people. We grew to 17 local jurisdictions. We serve 13 counties and four cities. We reach a little over 40% of the population, and I only have 241 counties to go. So on our website, every local government has a page, and we hope to grow this. I'm very excited to reconnect with your economic development folks and become a part of their new energy over at the partnership. And what's exciting about this for us is one of the things we learned last year is where we're working with economic development, as Commissioner Colley told me over a year ago, we really connect with the business community. They know when a business is getting ready to upgrade. They know what's happening in the economic development community. So we will be working with them to develop a Brazos-specific business flyer, and I'm very excited about the opportunities. So I wanted to share with you, this is the biggest project we've done so far. This is a $24 million pace improvement to a really ugly 1910 mercantile building that was purchased for renovation. The cost of this building was $115 million, but this was the first time that pace was used as part of the capital stack to actually buy that building and renovate it. So pace was a part of the purchase. And they are, this now is two Marriott properties. It's an entire block. So they have two hotels that enter from different streets, high-end loft apartments and first-floor retail. But they're saving 40% on their energy bill and millions of gallons of water annually. But this is what I want to show you. So when they went to buy this building, they used EB5 money, they used historic tax credits, a great interest rate, and they put their own equity into it, but they were short $22 million, and they were going to have to take out a mezzanine loan at 15%. So their average interest rate to buy this building was 9.29%. They learned about pace, realized the significant portion of what they were going to finance was going to result in energy and water savings, so they got rid of the mezzanine loan and replaced it with a pace loan and dropped the interest rate to buy this building by almost 2%. Huge savings in addition to the ongoing operational savings by lowering the utility rates that they would have otherwise had to pay. Our first office building in Houston was a more typical project, $1.3 million. They're saving 38% on their energy reduction. This is new HVAC and lighting. And what I want to show you here, oop, I went too far. I don't know how to go back. Okay. Can you, let's use the keyboard. Oh my goodness, I am not. That's, okay. All right. Now I want to hit previous again. Let's see if I can. I apologize. Okay. So this funding, the $1.3 million, did not come out of the company's pocket, so they were cash flow positive from day one. And they have, so they were able to do this improvement without using a single, one of their own dollars, so they're, so they are benefiting from this tremendously. The pace assessment is larger, the pace savings are significantly larger than the pace assessment, so they're actually bringing money into the building. So the property manager of this building is a real hero to the owners of the building who are not in the area. So this is one of the ways that we can help a community with outside investment in their buildings, keep those buildings up to date. Investors who are not local tend to let buildings, they just take the cash out of the building and they don't take care of it. So this is a way the property manager really became a hero, not only to the property owners, but to the tenants and the, and the community as well. Okay. I love this project, and I think this project is, is one that, that I want to replicate through the rest of the state. This humble building was empty for 10 years in Corsicana, and it was a Hager sewing plant. A company from Missouri, Missouri has a pace program, did a site visit and called the Economic Development Director for Navarro County and said, Scott, we want to buy that building. If you'll create a pace program because we want to, we want to use it, we'll buy that building. So they did, and they did. And Navarro County got a call at the end of the year saying, when we go live with this building, it was finished last week, and approved, the second engineering approval when it was made last week. They're creating 60 to 80 permanent manufacturing jobs for Corsicana in this empty building. So we're very excited about that. It's our first industrial. It's 325,000. It's a, you know, it's a very typical, normal value, but we're excited about what it means for the rest of the state and the example that it sets. So this is my contact information, which you all have, but may I answer any questions?
This is a terrific program. Thank you for sharing this annual report with us.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We hope to, we hope to provide a whole lot more opportunity and engagement in the, in the coming year. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Colley for her initiative in bringing this program to Brazos County, particularly as an early adopter, and in order to connect economic development folks in our local community, I was able to facilitate a meeting between Ms. Hidinger yesterday and members of the BDEDC staff in order to get them up to speed because it had been over a year since that presentation had been made, and there are a number of new people there. And I think it was a very productive meeting. I want to thank Ms. Hidinger for taking the opportunity to help us out in our local community with that. I look forward to great things to come.
Thank you. And that reminds me to ask each of you, in your districts, if there are organizations that you think we ought to reach out to, opportunities to make presentations to rotaries or chambers, we really look for that and welcome, welcome those suggestions.
Good. Next.
Again, thank you for your thoughtfulness and the innovation of this program, the opportunities that the program brings to every community. I encourage you to visit with the Downtown Bryan Association. I think that there are many owners, property owners that could benefit from the program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to B, results of the 2018 Chamber Day.
Excuse me, had to drop off a card. Thank you, guys. Howdy. I'm Glenn Brewer, President and CEO of the Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce, and it is a privilege to be before you here today, representing over, over 1,500 local businesses and business professionals that reside here in Bryan College Station in Brazos County. We are so happy to come here and report our results for Chamber Day. We're really appreciative of Judge Peters and the Commissioners' Court for being our sponsor. We had another record-breaking Chamber Day. I believe this is number 10, and I'll hit you with some quick numbers from our Chamber Day. We had over 230 volunteers, up for 200 last year, and I really believe, for those of you that have been there, that they have a lot of fun doing this, that there's a good reason behind it, but the people have fun doing it. Our volunteers go up every year. We had 65 teams rather than 50. We cut a few teams' number down to get more teams to cover more area. The interesting thing about that was 30 more volunteers and 15 more teams, blanketing Bryan College Station in Brazos County, knocking on business doors, just telling them thank you for being in business, thank you for the taxes that you pay, thank you for the workers that you hire, and asking a few questions that we have for our survey for the county. It's just so much fun. With all those extra teams and extra volunteers, we only visited six more businesses than last year, 1,206. And the reason became evident pretty quick. People are getting, so enjoying Chamber Day now, but they're, the business owners, instead of walking in, taking the thank you, taking the survey and leaving, they're sitting there talking to the teams, they're giving them tours of their business, they're having them try on their products and things, they're spending a lot more time. So the only thing we can do to get more businesses out there is just to get more volunteers and more teams. But it really is, the function of it is doing so much better that we accidentally visited a few less. Of the 1,206 people we visited, 912 actually took the survey. And I point out that it's an unscientific survey, but when you go into 912 businesses and you talk to the person behind the counter, to the owner, a manager, it could be a part-time student from A&amp;M, when you talk to 912 people and you ask them some of these basic questions, you can get a pretty good feel of what local businesses is thinking out there when you combine all these numbers together. And that's what I'm going to present to you today. If you guys would flip over real quick to the numbers that we have. First question we ask, what do you expect our local economy to do? You can see we have the numbers for '16, '17, and '18. Basically, our numbers did not change that much from '17 to '18. They went up from '16. We had 82% overall think the economy is going to do better in the coming year. Only 2% said they thought the economy would decrease, and 11% the same, which is about the same, and that would make sense because of the way the local economy is going. If you kind of drill down into the details, one number that kind of stood out to me was as far as decrease, you know, who would expect the economy to decrease? 5%. The largest number we had was in the retail section. And then again, 5% out of 100% is not that bad. But that's, they actually, so there is probably some competition in the retail market, and they're looking at that. But overall, the numbers are fantastic on what people expect the local economy to do in the coming year. If you turn the page over, our next question, compared to the previous 12 months, how have sales changed? In 2018, we had 60%, or so that they have an increase, 11% decrease and about a quarter staying the same. That's a little bit better than '17, so that's good news. One number kind of that stands out there, if you look kind of on the bottom of that, there is one category where 25% felt they had a decrease in sales, and that was the tourism hospitality. I'm pretty sure that that probably doesn't have to do with the businesses as much as the competition and the new hotels and everything that is online. And so the people that we visited, we had about 25% felt that their sales had gone down in the previous year, but other, all the numbers are still strong. On the next page, outside of business, how would you rate the overall quality of life in our community, which is always one of my favorite questions? We had 54% say excellent, 38 good. We kind of combined those together. That's 92.98% think that this is an excellent quality or good quality of life. 93% of, if you combine those two last year, so that's about the same. Interesting enough, the biggest, only one that said average, 15% said it was average, and that was also back into the tourism section where they were not having as, as good a year as everyone else, but still the overall numbers are fantastic. Interesting one on the next page, do you expect your number of employees to change next year? Once again, the numbers are going up. Overall, 47.8%, almost 48% said they expect their number of employees to increase. That's up from last year and up from the year before that, too. Interesting enough, I know just from anecdotal information, talking to people, a lot of people expect their employees to increase. They're not sure where they're going to come from because our employment is so low. They're out there looking and trying to find these guys, but they are ready to hire. You can see almost 50% of our businesses expect to increase their employees, which is a great number. That probably 10% decrease is in the arts and culture. That's the biggest number there, but that's just a small number overall. All right, last question, how would you rate the quality of qualified applicants in our area for your type of business? This is kind of interesting. The overall in 2018, we had 39% said it was good, 37 average, and 14 poor. This, maybe we ought to reword this question a little bit next year, there's some kind of ambiguity there. How would you rate the quality of qualified applicants? Is that the, how the quality of the ones that you got, or is that you're having a hard time finding quality applicants? I think that might drive the number down a little bit. Some people interpret that as I have a hard time finding quality applicants, not the applicants I get are qualified or not. I think we want to know if they're able to find quality applicants, so I think we may reword that next year. But once again, the numbers are still good. So overall, I would tell you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we can talk later and dig down into the details, another fantastic year. The numbers are great. We appreciate everything Brazos County has done for us. I know we mentioned we, we made it the expo last year. We're looking forward to coming back to our home at the Brazos Center, probably in the coming year, if you're kind enough to sponsor this again. I really think that we all get a lot out of it. We appreciate everything you guys do. Also want to say a thank you to Commissioner Berry for coming to Washington, D.C. with us. We certainly appreciate that. We had a good trip to D.C. this year, and, you know, we go in, we visit every single member of the Texas delegation, and we give them our local federal legislative action plan, and we're told again and again, over and over, the fact that we have members there from Bryan, College Station, Brazos County, Texas A&amp;M, Blinn, and local business leaders. It's a powerful message when you meet with those people, to have that unified message with them. So we appreciate your support in that, and we appreciate, appreciate your support of the chamber overall. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, ladies. Great job.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we will move on and consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 20. Number four is acceptance of donated Visa gift card to purchase food for probation you on summer field trips in an amount of $100. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number five is request for approval for increase of $500 to the change fund used by the staff for renting RV spaces, horse stalls, and selling shavings and pellets for the expo events. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six is approval of following job descriptions. One small change, it should, the A should have risk management instead of human resource department. That should be risk management. That's the only correction on there. So I assume that you're going to take that into account. Okay. Motion A to approve. A and B, would that change? And I think we have second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Change that on the materials, and we've got a copy. Agenda brought it in. Got it. Okay, thank you. Number seven is approval of the agreement with Government Jobs, Inc., DBA, NEOGOV.
To approve?
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number eight is request for Amendment Technology Department to approve change order Q4931LA-01 to Tri-Tech Information RMS Project to replicate the production in Farm Odyssey interfaces with test training environment.
Move to approve.
Second. Eric, you want to, you got anything really to say about kind of what's going on with the RMS, and we still?
Well, the, you know, we built interfaces between the production and justice software and the Farm RMS to move warrants, protective orders, data into, between systems. And now that we've got those things working to our everybody's satisfaction, we would like to replicate that so that we can move test data between tests. We've been able to do the majority of our testing today without, without these interfaces in place, but as time goes on, more and more of the, of the changes to the software that we work to test, it's just easier if we have those interfaces between the test systems and then we can, we can drive along with our testing without worrying about corrupting some kind of data.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion to second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 10 is cancellation of contract 18-120 for landscape maintenance with Regal Water Services for non-performance. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 11 is award of bid number 18-120 for landscape maintenance recommended award is Grass Masters.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 13 is expenditure journals FY17/18, 050146-050148 and 060011 through 060013.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 14 is tax refund applications for the following.
I move approval of A through S. Second.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 15 is Commissioners' Court minutes for the following dates.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 16 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY17/18, 36.1 through 36.4.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 17 is personnel change stats.
Move to approve.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 18 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8004575 through claim number 8004860.
Move to approve.
Second.
Number 11 is award of bid number 18-120 for landscape maintenance recommended award is Grass Masters.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second, award of Grass Masters. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 11 is, let's see, there wasn't 11. Number 12 is renewal of contract 19-006R, water treatment with Westco Chemicals, Inc.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 13 is expenditure journals FY17/18, 050146-050148, and 060011 through 060013.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 14 is tax refund applications for the following.
I move approval of A from S. Second.
Motion made second, if you approve A, we have a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 15 is Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 16 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY17/18, 36.1 through 36.4.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 17 is personnel change stats.
Move to approve.
Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Number 18 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8004575 through claim number 8004860.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. We'll skip down to number 21 is acknowledgement of monthly reports submitted in May of 2018. Number 22 is acknowledgement of Brazos County Emergency Services District, number one independent auditors' report and financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2017. Number 23 is acknowledgement of Research Valley Partnership, Inc., financial statements with report of the independent auditors dated September 30, 2017. Number 24 is sheriff's report on inmate population, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge. So our peak in the last 24 hours was 657, 544 males and 113 females. We have 39 with electronic monitoring and 13 pending.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Number 25 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
If you'll join us for a health and safety safari, that's the 2018 Employee Health and Safety Expo, that's this Thursday, the 14th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Brazos Center. Health assessment, safety demonstrations, backhoe rodeo, prizes and giveaway items, and you enter, win the grand prize on instant pop. Everyone who attends will get a free t-shirt, so. Health and Wellness Expo, Health and Safety Expo, Thursday, the 14th, send it to at the Expo Center.
Brazos Center.
At the Brazos, did I say Expo? Yeah, it's the Brazos Center, my bad.
Okay. Anybody else? Number 26 is call citizens input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will go back up to number 19 and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss personnel matters. We need to call attorneys Jennifer and Brewer. She's here. Time is 2:35.
Do you need to follow stage?
That's all.
A couple going on, so he might be one of them.
Fire, so I didn't get one of them. I've been talking to the judge, and I was just working out if they want to do a different type of business on the Terry Road on Power Ridge, like what they've got at the other times. Down there enough that I'll just get together with you, get together with Bruce, and talk about them, and Ford Wells, and talk about what you need to do, and when they do the construction on that, to make sure that they get to maintain what they want to do, they're going to pay for all the maintenance, and get all the maintenance on, just wanted to get together with all the others.
Put a meeting together.
Do you want me to give you a card? Do you have any other information?
Oh, no, that's fine.
I just talked to... I knew that it was you and one other person.
She might give it to her if she doesn't need it, that's okay. Okay.
She's at a conference, yeah. She's so great, she's so good.
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, okay, just wanted to...
Okay, to be there, okay. And if you'd like, that paper again, or if you would just email me about rescheduling, that's fine, you don't have to call. You can email.
You reschedule.
Yes, ma'am. I usually do her calendar and several of the others as well, so if you need anything, just let me know, and if you don't mind emailing me a copy of that.
We just spent that for three minutes, but I wanted to have a more visit, and also I did, which I wasn't. I think we...
It'll be perfect, and I will just let her know that as well, and that we'll be rescheduling.
Good, because I want Maria.
I'm sure that Commissioner Colling likes to meet her as well, so it'll be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Coming out of executive session, it's 10:44, there's no action to be taken, and next item is to adjourn. Thank you.